First on the agenda. Thank you, Abby, for remembering to record us. Next up is roll call and seating of alternates. I see Scott Bresson here. Steve Nelson. Lee Ann Hutchinson. And myself as regular members. Anne Creme is not with us this evening. Yes, Lee Ann.
Hi, I'll just mention for the record that my mother is an abutting property owner to this property, however, I am not.
Commissioner Hutchinson, can you read, can you act on this application with respect only to the evidence that you've heard during the public hearing? The criteria, the regulations, and without any regard to your mother's ownership of property?
Yes, I feel that I can.
Thank you.
And so with that in mind, to replace Anne Creme, Susan England is the next alternate up to participate. Anne Blanchard was the last alternate that we we put in. And so Susan, you're you're seated for Anne Creme this evening.
Okay, and Jed, I would just like to note for the record that I did watch the recording of the previous meeting that I had missed.
And Commissioner, again for the record, Mark Brants, Commissioner England, do you feel that you are qualified to participate and vote on this matter?
Yes, I do, because I did watch, I was at the first meeting and I did watch the entire entirety of the meeting of April 18.
Thank you.
Okay, so having having the roll call and seating of alternates done, next on the agenda is old business. This is a site plan application from Garrett Homes. Property of 580 Lake Road applicant seeking a site plan approval for permitted use in an industrial zone. I guess before we start, because everybody here is aware that the the public hearing is closed. At the last meeting, I said we would be acting on this application at our next meeting on May 16. After discussing the application with Attorney Brants, he pointed out to me that the site plan approval remains at 65 days, even though we had the public hearing in there. And so we didn't have the amount of time that I thought we did to act on the application after the closure of the public hearing. So that's why we're meeting tonight to to complete our action on the application before we exceed the 65 days following receipt. The there was one issue, and I think it certainly caught me by surprise, and I think it caught most of us by surprise. It came up at the last meeting, and that was the driveway entrance from 580 Lake Road on onto Lake Road. And I looked at it. Is one issue, as I was discussing it with Agent Halussy. You know, he was looking at it as two different issues, so I'd just like to clarify my understanding of of the issues out there. Because it would be nice to get good resolution on the matters here before we make a motion to act on it. The regulation stated that there must be 100 foot separation between the two driveways. Given that there was not, there were also words in the same section, and we'll put them up here in a minute on access control, that talk to the benefits of common driveways. And I understand that that neither the current property owner or the potential property buyer for the retail store are interested in sharing a common driveway. It was pointed out that the commission does have discretion on using that. My interest in bringing that up at the last meeting was in an attempt to provide a condition of approval that would allow the application to meet our regulations. That's why I looked at it is is one issue. There's two there. If I attended some training that Mark Brants gave our zoning Board of Appeals earlier this year. And in that, we talked about the regulations for a town being kind of a best approach cookie cutter thing, thinking that all lots were about the same. There was a recognition that all lots are not the same, and so there has to be a process for dealing with that. That process, as I understand it, is what the zoning Board of Appeals is all about. And they can grant a variance when a piece of property doesn't seem to meet the requirement. I think most people on the commission thought the proposed driveway was put in a good place. As we had talked in both public hearings that we had held, we act on the application, not whether we like it or not, but whether or not it meets our regulations. And so I was hung up and not sure how to go with with the 100 foot regulation that we weren't meeting there. So that's that's where I think we are tonight. I know Agent Halussy asked the applicants if they were interested in a an extension to allow us to try and sort this out. Maybe maybe at the time it wasn't recognized there was anything to sort out. I still think there might be. But we were told that the applicants were not interested in an extension at that point in time. So anyhow, what I'd like to do next is I'm going to put up on the screen the the section of our regulations on access control, so we can all see what the words are that are going to be the most most of our discussion here this evening. So Abby, can you allow me to share my screen?
You should have the ability to let me know if you can't.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Brants, one thing, but before you go go to that, there's just one thing I'd like to comment on, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
I did review your record. The applicant has stated that this will be retail use. They have not disclosed the tenant, and they don't have to either. It's irrelevant. Some of the letters that you received from members of the public speculated that this would be a particular tenant, a Dollar General, and asked you to deny it because it was Dollar General. I must instruct you to completely disregard those kinds of statements. Whether it's Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Aldi, CBS, Walgreens, whoever it is, is irrelevant. Your regulations talk about a retail use, it's a permitted use in the zone, and who the tenant is, who the retailer is, is completely irrelevant. If if you feel you cannot disregard that, you need to recuse yourselves. But I would just say to you that who the tenant is is has no place in your discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Attorney Branch, and that's why I think we tried to make it very clear at both public hearings that it wasn't whether we were in favor of one particular store or another, it was solely based on, does the application meet the regulations? If yes, we have to approve it. If no, we have to deny it. And so that's where we are tonight. So. So here's the section out of out of our 23.4. I am aware that there was some feedback that possibly Ben Franklin Plumbing and a retail store were not similar uses here. Certainly, when I when I read that, you know, it looks like we're the comma is around paths and sidewalks for similar use. I don't know exactly if that requires, you know, if similar uses makes a difference with respect to common driveway or not.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's actually a typo. I think it's supposed to be or similar uses or not for. But maybe it is supposed to be for for similar uses. But I I thought it was or maybe not.
Okay, it very well could be, and you know, I didn't compare our regs to anybody else's. I was spending my time trying to make sure that I understood what our regulation said coming to the meeting tonight. But clearly, you know, down here is where I I struggle to to think that the application was in compliance, said no proposed driveway shall be closer than 100 feet to any other existing or proposed driveway. And then it goes on to say unless the site is of such width that compliance with this right requirement would preclude access. I read that to think that it would not preclude access if we moved the driveway 100 feet away. I don't want to move the driveway 100 feet away. That would put it right up at the intersection of Route 6. And we also weren't precluding access coming off of Route 6 itself. So that's that's the regulation that I could not feel that we were in compliance with, and that's why I thought different lots had different peculiarities with them. And in this particular case, the peculiarity to reduce that distance below 100 feet is probably a good case for variance. Because it does make sense to where they put it. I also look down here at the interest of public safety, the number of driveways onto public streets shall be minimized. And in one of the the comments that came up in the public hearing, and here's here's a picture of the site 580 Lake Road, here's Ben Franklin Plumbing. The site's about 100 feet here. But one of the one of the concerns was you know, within a couple hundred feet, we've got a stop sign at Merritt Valley Road. We've got a crosswalk for Hop River State Park Trail. We've got the entrance to Ben Franklin. We would have the entrance to a retail store. We would have a crosswalk going to a newly developed parking area over here. And then we would have the traffic light. So so I thought the the common driveway wherever feasible was good. I asked for feedback on why a common driveway might not be feasible. And I was told that you know, it's it's messy, there's risk. And that's kind of what I thought the lawyers were for was to make, you know, life is messy. My only experience with common driveways is for for a bunch of homes, and it seems to be it seems to work okay there. So I was a little surprised that after having worked with the applicant well all through the the subdivision process through this, that what I consider to be kind of a minor point was was the showstopper, but but certainly, you know, the applicant, the owner have have their rights to to feel however they want on there. So my goal was to provide an opportunity to have a a application that would meet our requirements. So that's that's where we are at this point. Agent Halussy, do you have any other information that was passed on to you that's relevant to to share with the commission tonight?
Well, I did have a number of conversations with with the applicant. And it pretty much go along the lines of what you had indicated. And I don't really want to introduce any new information. I mean, there was Okay, yeah, I'm okay. So no, I don't have much to offer. I don't have any that I can bring up at this time.
Okay. I guess in the interest of sharing information with the commission on information that's already in the public record. I just wanted to talk through a couple of things that I thought lent themselves to an easy sharing of a common driveway. And and again, you know, we can, we can make it a condition of approval, or we cannot make it a condition of approval. But as I looked at the picture here that that is in the record, you know, and here's here's the driveway coming in from the retail store. Here's the driveway coming into Ben Franklin. And you know, we could, we could either move these two sections right up to the property line. That was one solution. I saw this little bump out here, and I was thinking that it would be very easy to have the parking lot go up, connect into with a little stop sign here, share the Ben Franklin Drive coming out. Or if there was a concern that most of the traffic would be from the retail store, we could even connect, you know, the the Ben Franklin driveway into this little section that can come out here. So there were three different things when I looked at this that I said could be easily accommodated in. And I was trusting in the fact that the lawyers could make that satisfactory to all parties, especially, you know, given at the current point in time, the owner of both properties is the same person. So that's, I just wanted to share with the rest of the commission members what my ideas were when when I talked about the proposal to to share the driveway. So with that, Agent Halussy has prepared a draft motion. I guess. And I hopefully scroll down so you can see most of it here. Hopefully, this is not catching anybody by surprise. There are a couple of tweaks to the draft that we sent out the other day. I think the only the only thing in here that that I think might be contentious is this paragraph. And it says, the pavement at the southerly end of the parking lot east of Lake Road shall be extended to the property line with the adjacent Ben Franklin Plumbing site to facilitate a future interconnection with that parking lot. It may come to pass that there would never be a connection with the Ben Franklin driveway. But if at some time Ben Franklin Plumbing property, well, the proposed driveway on the Lake Road may be constructed and may remain in use only until such time as Ben Franklin Plumbing property provides or is required to provide a shared access driveway serving both properties. I'm under the understanding, you know, and it makes sense that I cannot require Ben Franklin to do anything with respect to a shared driveway at this point in time. It's not their application. This is only an application for a retail store. So our proposal is that we would put the put the driveway into a position to accommodate future common driveway usage. My hope would be that the applicable parties would see that it it was not that difficult. And at this point in time, they would choose to to go with a common driveway. But I do understand that, you know, there's some fairly strong feelings on on both parties that that they're not interested in that. At that time, the separate driveway from Lake Road serving only 580 Lake Road would be removed, and the party shall exchange cross easements for the new shared driveway in a vehicular pedestrian connection between the two parking lots. Such cross easements will be subject to review and approval by the commission's attorney. I'm not going to read through the rest of them here. I think if somebody chooses to make the motion, I will ask that person to read the motion into the record. And it's fairly lengthy, so I won't read through it now. I'm hoping that somebody would choose to possibly make a motion, and then we could if we got a second on the motion, then we could discuss the different things prior to voting on the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Attorney Branch.
For the record, Mark Brants, I did, I gave this another look this afternoon. I have provided to Halussy a slight tweak to this to add just before we issuance of his own permit.
I can share screen. There, Mark. Your voice cut out a little bit when you turned the other way, even though you're wearing a mic.
I was gonna say, that shouldn't be happening. I did, I did add one more sentence just before the bold type, the all capitals requirements prior to. And I will read that for you. I have it on screen, too. I can share screen the additional language that I proposed to add to this draft motion. Again, not recommending with the commission approval or deny. If you do use this draft, there's one sentence that needs to be added right after all the conditions, and that sentence is the preceding conditions are integral to this motion for approval. And that without them, the application would have been in violation of the zoning regulations, the commission would have had no choice but deny it. Again, I can put that as a share screen if you wish. But that's
Mark, because we couldn't hear you well.
All right, then I will do a share screen on that. Are you able to see the highlighted language?
Yeah.
Okay, that that's that's what I just read to you.
Okay, yep. Thank you, Attorney Branch, and
Welcome.
Those were
Leave that up there, Jed.
I'm trying to figure out how to cut and paste from the screen to put it in. Is your so?
I would tell you this, this revised language is is in Jim Halussy's box at the zoning office.
Okay, but but the basic letter that you added that to is what Jim sent you this afternoon?
Yes, other than that, it's exactly the same as what Jim sent this afternoon.
Very good. Yep. So we'll we'll let your screen stay up there, Attorney Branch. That will be the the conditions that we go act upon.
Chairman Larson, Jim Halussy, may I make one comment? There was a request early on during the public hearing process from a butter regarding the construction of a fence to protect privacy that perhaps I was remiss in not giving the the commission the opportunity to address that directly. And it is not in this draft motion. Just pointing it out. I'm not suggesting it be in the motion, just pointing out that it was a request that was never never addressed by the commission directly.
Okay, it was read into the record at the first public hearing that we held.
Yes, yes, it was.
And so I guess if a commission member feels strongly that it would be appropriate to put that in as a condition of approval, we could add that. Does anybody desire to make a motion regarding action on the application of 580 Lake Road?
Jed, can I ask a question first?
Go ahead, Steve.
So if we were to approve this motion, I don't understand how it gives us the authority to approve this as a variance to the regulations without them applying, the applicant applying for a variance. Can somebody explain that to me?
It's Branch, you want to take that one?
I'll try to. You you can't grant a variance. What this what this does is it imposes a condition that brings the application into compliance, so they don't need a variance.
Okay, but how does it bring it into compliance? It's still
Well, you can't, Ben Franklin has no application in front of you. The regulation says that the commission may make provision for shared driveways, and that's what you're doing. You're making provision for shared driveway. And that and that avoids the problem of the one. So you can either have a 100 foot. The idea here is that people coming and going from two adjacent driveways not turning to each other. Right collide as they do that. So you want, you either want 100 foot separating them or you want them combined into one driveway. Either is okay under your regulation. And so what's happening here is this condition is saying that that it doesn't have to be 100 feet because it will be combined with the adjacent driveway at such time as that property comes in for further review, if that ever happens.
But if it if it doesn't happen, then we have a situation.
Yes, but your regulation says Yes, but your regulation says the commission may require that any driveways be designed. And easements to adjacent properties be conveyed in order to facilitate present or future sharing of such driveways. So you're making provision for future sharing.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Branch.
You're welcome.
Okay, so going back to, I am looking for a motion. To act.
Out to the motion, Jed, I can.
Thank you, Scott.
Were you going to discuss that fence issue?
I was going to open the motion for discussion after we, we had a second for.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion? On. But I guess, so Attorney Branch, you've got the, you've got the best copy. If you can start us right up at the top and we'll take the, the conditions. One by one to. Read through them and make sure that the commission. Understands and agrees with what it is we're, we're looking for. So the first one to side. Stay again, Leanne.
I wonder if before the attorney starts to read the conditions. You asked about discussion. I have a couple of questions and comments.
Well, maybe put the motion on the table first and then you can discuss the motion. Unless there's questions as to how the motion's drafted, that's appropriate to ask now.
It, I guess it's, I guess my question is not how the motion is drafted. It has to do with some of the items that we've been discussing.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
So, so Leanne, with those, would your questions be. Jermaine, when we get to specific items in the. Conditions of approval, like the shared driveway item, that would wait till then, or is it something we should discuss before? It's not really pertinent to these specific conditions.
It is pertinent to the specific conditions.
Okay, so we'll, we'll allow you to ask any of the questions after I'll go through. I won't make Attorney Branch read, read his motion. I'll, I'll go through there and we can discuss each one as we get there. I guess before I would make the offer to. Do the applicants, you. Is, is it still? Your position that no extension of time to work on. A win-win solution to, to all concerned. You'll be entertained.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Peter Alter. Attorney representing the applicant from the firm of Alter and Pearson. And we would respectfully decline to discuss an extension.
Okay. The sidewalk shown along Lake Road frontage shall extend in a northerly direction to Route Six pavement with a landing area adjacent to the pedestrian button pole. I think, you know, we talked about that during the. During the public hearing and. The applicant agreed to that. It just hasn't been factored into the, the drawings is, is to the best of my knowledge, and that's why we put it in there as a condition. Second item, a sidewalk landing shall be shown as to extend from the new sidewalk along Lake Road out to Lake Road at the northeasterly corner. And adjacent to the proposed driveway. Again, Agent Halsey, I think it's, should be southeasterly corner. In.
I think you're right. Yes.
Okay. I think I am, too.
I thought I made a change.
That's why we're reading through it line by line, just to make sure that we got it the way we want it. Okay, and that was the second landing to, to cross the road to get to the parking area for the, the rail trail. Ad sign detail, which includes dimensions to the final plan and which shall be in conformance with the zoning regulations. Again, we were, we're shown. A couple of signed plans. They just weren't in incorporated into the site plan, and we would like to have those before we sign off on, on the site plan. Rights to drain on the subject property shall be granted to adjoining property currently in the name of Lake Road LLC. Situated to the southwest. Plan shall note same and requisite documentation shall be submitted to the town of Andover's Building and Land Use Office for review and approval prior to filing with the town clerk. I think we had talked about that during the public hearing and no issues there. A note shall be added indicating that sightline improvement shall be performed in accordance with Andover zoning regulations. And the town engineer's recommendation is corresponded dated April 13th, 2022. Which you've got. To eliminate the word is, has been incorporated into the public record of this application. The letter of approval of the application listing all conditions of approval issued by the town of Andover shall be added to the final mylar. The design engineer shall assess the options of discharging the runoff from the roof. Into the subsurface system so as to further encourage infiltration during all seasons, including the winter freeze conditions. And shall provide the assessments to the town engineer if upon consultation with the town engineer, the plan should be modified to reflect same. Notes shall be added to address the fact. That a final engineered design for the previous pavement structure shall be submitted to the town engineer for review and approval. And the design engineer shall oversee the installation of the previous pavement structure. Engineer who will provide a certification that the installation was performed substantially in accordance with the design. The pavement at the southerly end of the parking lot east of Lake Road. I think that is west of Lake. The, the east, the other side of the road is the side closest to Willamette. Shall be extended to the property line with the adjacent Ben Franklin Plumbing site to facilitate a future interconnection with that parking lot. The proposed driveway on the Lake Road may be constructed. And may remain in use only until such time as Ben Franklin Plumbing Property provides or is required to provide. The shared access driveway serving both properties. At that time, the separate driveway from Lake Road serving only 580 Lake Road will be removed. And the party shall exchange cross easements for the new shared driveway and a vehicular and pedestrian connection between the two parking lots. Such cross easements will be subject to review and approval by the commission's attorney. And at any point as we're going through here, if the commission members have questions, you know, bring them up as we go. The plan shall note that the strip of land between the sidewalk along Lake Road and the road itself shall be. Grass buffer, and I would like that to say an eight-foot grass buffer, because that's what we agreed upon in the public here. The preceding conditions are integral to this motion for approval in that without them, the application would have been in violation. Of the zoning regulations and the commission would have had no choice but to deny it. Requirements prior to issuance of zoning permit per section 12D of the zoning regulations. File final plans and associated document with the town clerk in accordance with applicable regulations. Clearing along the neighboring property shall be done so as to provide the requisite sightline. And a sightline demonstration shall be submitted to the Andover Building and Land Use Office for review and approval. Applicant to provide Andover Building and Land Use Department with documentation of approval. By the Department of Transportation to utilize existing culvert crossing Route Six. During the construction process. Prior to commencement of construction, the applicant shall provide an anticipated construction schedule and participate in pre-construction conference with downstairs. And I think that's the end, end of it is that not correct, Attorney Branch? Okay, you're on mute, but I see your head shaking up and down. So that is.
Correct, yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson, I know you had some questions at the start. Did our corrections address those, or did you have any other questions at this point in time?
Yes.
Yes, we did address them.
No, not quite yet. I mean, my question has to do with. Can you scroll back to the paragraph that starts, I think, something about the southerly part? I had it up myself on another screen. So the, okay, the, the pavement at the southerly end. Okay, thank you. Where it says, "The proposed driveway on to Lake Road may be constructed and may remain in use only until such time as the Benjamin Franklin Plumbing property provides or is required to provide. A shared access driving driveway serving both properties. At that time, the separate driveway from Lake Road serving only 580 Lake Road will be removed and the party shall exchange cross easements. For the new shared driveway and a vehicular and pedestrian connection between the two parking lots. So I'm not, I don't foresee that that would ever happen. In other words, I think that this time is now. So if the applicants are very reluctant to share the driveway, I don't foresee how this would ever come about. In the future and cause the elimination of a proposed driveway into 580 Lake Road only, correct?
That, that is correct, and I don't, I, I agree with your assumption that it would probably never come to pass. That doesn't mean that at some point in time, Ben Franklin would, would come to us with a. Site plan for something different. And at that point in time, we could require them to go. Complete the common driveway. But. There is a good chance that that would never happen. I guess the other thing that I would say is that. You know, it makes. What we're doing here is actually making the situation just a little bit worse. Than it currently is. But we can't issue a variance. That's what the ZBA does. And so this is. The best that we can do to have an application that meets our requirements. Other options that I know I looked at. And I think the applicants have probably looked at, too. Is we could get the 100-foot separation by putting the driveway all the way out to Route Six, which, yeah, isn't going to work. There could be some consideration to not having an entrance. Onto Lake Road, which I think from a safety perspective, you know, I don't like. I guess the other. The other thing that could be done was, you know, you could go so far as Ben Franklin would move their driveway. Up to provide the 100-foot separation. I think that's unlikely, too, but, but that's another option. In my mind, the best solution was the variance. But given that we don't have a variance, given that the applicant doesn't want an extension. This allows us. To approve the application if the commission votes to accept this. If, if you don't think that is any good. Then I guess you could vote. Against it, and that's a possibility, too. The one place, the one place that I know, there are two driveways right close together. Is I drive down, you know, behind the stop and shop in, in Willamette. And there's an entrance onto, I think it's Valley Street over there. And it's right next to a driveway that goes into a. A facility with Dollar Tree and Planet Fitness and that sort of thing. And, you know, I'm not fond of that. And, and that's why I was really hoping that the applicants would see it in their heart to figure out a way to share a common driveway. I think that is the best, safest solution. But we, this is, this is the best we can do to facilitate that at some point in the future.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Branch, two thoughts for you. First of all. I, I don't know the situation with Ben Franklin Plumbing. But if they came in for an addition, a change of use. Any of those would bring them within your jurisdiction. That may never happen. I don't know, but it could. The other thought is, you see where my cursor is now? One thing that I'm just gonna type this in red line so you can consider it, may be removed or shared with Ben Frank, with, with Ben Franklin. Plumbing property. So that the idea here. Would be, it may be the Garrett Homes driveway would stay. And the Ben Franklin one would close, or maybe the Ben Franklin would stay and the Garrett Homes one would close. So I, I didn't mean to suggest that it had to be one or the other. I don't think the commission cares. The idea here is, as you, as I mentioned before, the purpose of your regulation is not to have two driveways so close. That you have conflicting turning movements and also people get confused. You know, these parking lots don't connect. And so when someone thinks they're pulling into one driveway, they accidentally pull to the other one, and now they can't. They can't correct their mistake without going back out on the road. So that's why you have that regulation. And if, if this new language is okay, I can leave it in. If not, I can take it out. I, I guess it's up to the mover and second.
I like the addition that, that's what we talked about, you know, is, is part of the, the possibilities there. Several possibilities for how, how to accomplish that. And Attorney Branch, from your perspective, you is, is a common driveway. Easy, straightforward, low risk. You. Is, is that doable?
It's done, it's done every day. All over Connecticut, especially for commercial, adjacent, commercial properties. Cross easements are standard and typical. And I believe that Garrett Homes LLC has experience with them already.
Okay, thanks, Attorney Branch.
Actually, I know that they do.
Leanne, did you have any other questions?
Yes. Last month, I asked about. The driveway cut on Route Six, and I asked if a tractor trailer truck, which the applicant is saying there would only be one tractor trailer delivery a week. Could come and go from Lake Road. And I guess from a driveway on, on Lake Road. And just to back up for a second. It looks to me like the driveway to Ben Franklin Plumbing now is short and level and uncomplicated. So it seems to me to be feasible if they would agree to share the driveway with this application. I think my preference would be to have as much traffic as possible controlled by the light. So my question is. Let's say there was a shared driveway, or even if there was a driveway, if this gets figured out and there were two driveways. My question is mainly. I was told last month that there is. I was told last month that there is not enough room for tractor trailer trucks to come in off Lake Road, drive around the front of this retail operation, pull up to the side of it and be able to get back out onto Lake Road instead of Route six, that the tractor trailer truck would need to pull out on Route six. And some concern was expressed about traffic. So I guess it's a bit of a hypothetical question. Um, if the applicant and Ben Franklin right now don't want to share the driveway, as I said, even if there was another driveway, is there any room there to have the receiving dock of the building on the left hand side of the building as you would face it? So that a tractor trailer truck would not need to pull around the front of the building along the right side of the building and then not have enough room to maneuver back through the parking lot. Is there any scenario where that would work?
Commissioner, for the record, Mark Brants, the problem is the public hearing is closed. Uh, an extension to reopen it has not been granted, which is their right. So we really can't answer that question. We don't know. And we're not going to know.
Okay, so it's a bit of an unusual um circumstance here, but I see that that we can't exchange information. So I wasn't sure if that kind of a question was allowed. Okay, um, I guess that's the end of my remarks then. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any other questions or comments on the application? The motion before us.
Jed, Steve Nelson here. Just a comment. I think one thing we need to consider is Ben Franklin Plumbing is not a retail establishment. It's a, you know, and plumbing supply and there's minimal traffic going in and out of the Ben Franklin driveway. So uh, by making these accommodations for future consideration of a shared driveway, I think the commission is addressing the current situation as it applies to our regulations and as Attorney Brants has pointed out.
I agree. And additionally, you know, the traffic going into Ben Franklin is probably early in the morning before a store might even be open. Uh, there might be some sharing uh, at the same time. At the end of the day, don't know, but I I do think either case, there's probably minimal traffic going in or out there.
Right.
Okay, any other comments, Steve?
No, thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments? Do any, do any of the commissioners wish to include a condition of approval that the retail store put up a fence between the store and the Christmas tree park? Okay, hearing none, we will leave that condition of approval out.
I don't think, this is Leanne again, um, I don't think there's anything objectionable about asking for it.
I I don't think there's anything objectionable about asking for it either. I just didn't feel it appropriate that we make that demand. The applicants heard the, you know, public comment. They didn't come back and include that as part of the plan and at this point, you know, I I don't have I don't think that's something that we should be including as a condition to approve the application. Okay. So I think that's that completes the discussion on the motions. We we did change a couple of items. And so Attorney Brants will correct me if I'm wrong, but the the process is we we make a motion to accept the changes to the motion. Correct on that. And then we would go back and vote on the entire motion. So at this point.
That's correct.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the changes that we made to the draft motion by our review.
I'll make that motion, Jed.
Thank you, Steve. Looking for a second?
I second.
Thank you, Susan. Any further discussion before we vote on the changes to the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Scott?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The motion passes five zero zero. We now go back to the original motion as amended.
The amended motion, yes, as amended.
And any further discussion on the entire motion as amended? Hearing none. I'll call for a roll call vote on the motion that is before us here as we amended it this evening. Scott?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Leanne?
No.
I vote yes as well. The motion passes four one zero with Leanne opposed.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mark Brants again, I will email this to the zoning office uh, to you also, Mr. Chairman, so you have it. Uh, and I, if it's okay with you, I will copy Attorney Alter on that email.
Sounds good. Thank you, Attorney Brant.
Certainly.
Uh, that completes our action on the application for five eighty Lake Road. Are there any questions from the applicants at this point?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
You're welcome. I guess we'll see what happens next.
Yep.
Next item.
You are helpful. I I do appreciate all the work together. So thank you.
Thank you as well. Moving on, the next item is approval of the minutes from nineteen April, our regular meeting. And I had, I did have Abby a comment on page three. And the top paragraph last the second to the last sentence currently says Jay Larson stated, these factors do not carry weight within this particular decision. Um, that should be a period. The next sentence starts out if the proposed site plan meets the PZZ's regulations, we have to approve it. If the commission does not approve of the site plan and the time period for acting on an application is exceeded, those that those are the words that need to be added and the time period for acting on the application is exceeded, then it is automatically approved.
Got it. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, yeah, I did go back to to watch the video to make sure. And I didn't say exactly those words. I think I said, as time moves on down the road as opposed to exceeding the time period. But I don't think the minutes need to be verbatim. They got the point across. The the only other comment I had Abby is on page six, bottom sentence, they got it. A letter inversion on spilling my last name there. And I'd ask you to fix that for the record.
Sorry about that. Will do. Yep.
Any, any other commission members have any other comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Call for a roll call vote for approval. Scott?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Leanne?
I.
I vote I as well. The motion passes five zero zero. Next item, whose correspondence, Agent Halussy?
Well, I I don't have anything to share, but we did get a a letter of resignation from our board clerk, which I believe was distributed um, to 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 all members. And just, first of all, I like to thank her for doing a great job. And I I will be working, I will be trying to get somebody on board with whoever, town administrator and whoever else may be involved. That's all I have on that matter.
Okay, and for the record, I think Abby is going to be with us until hopefully August, Abby?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, then and I know we all share Jim's comment that you've done a fantastic job. When when you look at the the six pages, eight pages of minutes from the last meeting and you only got confused on what little paragraph there that that is a pretty outstanding job, and I certainly appreciate what you've done for the commission.
I appreciate the appreciation. Thank you.
Anything else, Agent Halussy?
No.
Next meeting is our regular meeting on May sixteenth at seven PM. And with that in mind, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I'll second that.
Scott, person seconded. Roll call vote, Scott?
I.
Susan?
I.
Steve?
I.
Leanne?
I.
And I vote I as well. That motion passes five zero zero. I appreciate everybody joining us this evening. For the, for another special meeting, I I just really appreciate the support. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks for your help, Attorney Brant.
Always my pleasure. Take care, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Night.